Right down my back.
Son of a cloud, probably no. Ms. Jackson, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Mr. Hunter is absent. All other board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comments. 3A, public comment regarding policy 8121, personal background checks. Just please note that this agenda item is to allow for public comments regarding policy 8121, personal background checks, excuse me, not general public comments. Therefore, the rules regarding general public comment will not be in effect. Both speakers should be respectful of time and comments must pertain to policy 8121, personal background checks. Mrs. Steele, did you get any requests?
No.
On to 3B, public comment regarding policy 5505, academic honesty. Please note as well, this agenda item is to allow for public comments regarding policy 5505, academic honesty, not general public comments. Therefore, the rules regarding general public comment will not be in effect. Both speakers should be respectful of time and comments must pertain to specifically the policy 5505, academic honesty. Mrs. Steele, did you receive any requests for public comment?
None.
Thank you. All right, 3C, general public comments. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of enrolled district students, or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. The translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant within one of the first three minutes be designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Anything, Mrs. Steele?
None.
Thank you. On to this administrator's report.
Yeah, I really don't have a lot, other than to let the board and public know that our fiscal year 2324 officially ends at midnight on Sunday, June 30th, and then on July 1st, next Monday, we will be starting our new fiscal year, and the new year will begin. Also, just a general reminder that we are operating all buildings and district office under our summer hours, therefore kind of extended hours Monday through Thursday, and then closing around 11:30 on Friday morning. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Board member reports.
The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on Wednesday, June 19th. We went over our scheduling and deadlines for the upcoming school year. Policy 3426, early retirement of teachers, which we'll be looking at this evening. Bond proceeds, management proposals. Requested more information to be brought back from the management companies. We had three proposals to look at. We also had revisions to the 2425 employee handbooks, which we'll be reviewing this evening. We also looked at the 202425 substitute rates and that's more, just to get things cleaned up so that with the new pay structure, that'd be more in line with the rest of it. And then we also looked at some job descriptions that we are now back within policy, where all of the outdated job descriptions have all been covered and taken care of, cleaned up. We also had the policy committee meeting this on Wednesday as well. Looked at the scheduling launch for the current year. Policy 3426, again, for the early retirement teachers, which we'll be looking at. Policy 0100, definitions. We just cleaned up some language in that and actually defined a piece that eliminates a little bit of gray area. Policy 5851, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays. That has been revised to help eliminate any undue stress for special exceptions, so that we'll be looking at this evening as well. Policy 500 for food service, cleaned up some language in that as well, which will be approved in that this evening. New policy 2264, the non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities. That we reviewed, and that will be coming to the board for first ratings at this evening. And then student handbook revisions, which we'll be taking care of those tonight as well. And then Richland School District Foundation, we just got done with that meeting this evening. Ahead of this meeting, we had a guest visitor that is a potential new member to the foundation to check that out, so we'll be having more information on that as he decides if he wants to actually pursue joining the foundation or not. And then there's a request for some vape detectors, and we need to get more information on that as well. And then we discussed the homecoming, which is October 4th, and the outstanding alumni. That information will be put out in the Richland Observer and Facebook and other social media platforms. We do have one application already for that, so that is open to all alumni, and there's a new form that is being finalized to be able to fill the application for that.
If you're asking me on that, it's not tonight. It's July 8th, is that first reading?
To the approval of minutes. There is an air in the meeting minutes from June 10th. Agenda item 10F showed six years when it was five years in one day. Mr. Dowd, not fully named, on agenda item 10F for the Dane County Education. So, I'll make a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of June 10, 2024, with the proposed revisions.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Bailey?
Aye.
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 To the financial items, the approval of statement of cash. I move we approve the statement of cash dated June 19th, 2024. Motion made by Mr. Dowd. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to point out or add?
Nothing on the statement of cash. Thank you.
Discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
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 Right, approval of invoices. I move we approve committee first bank general checking accounts checks number 86418 through 86443, ACH number 232401598 through 232401667, for a net total of $569,396.63. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district. Motion made by Mr. Dowd. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Mr. Bosworth?
Two things to point out. On the list of checks and invoices on page five, about a quarter of the way down, you'll see a description of billboard. Our stain program is trying to do some advertising prior to the next school year. That's one of the resources they're going to be using. And then the second thing to point out is on page seven, about half the way down there, you'll see a payment to Richland County final balance payment, East Hall land contract, $111,000. That's the remainder. That should be the last payment we would make, then East Hall would be transferred to our ownership. And just a reminder, that was funded through the sale of the Jefferson Building.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Dowd?
Aye.
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 The update on the selling of general obligation bonds.
Mr. Bosworth, can you give an update on that?
Sure. At the May 15th meeting, a representative from Baird was here and explained to the school board how we could sell our bonds in two sales, and by doing that, we could avoid an IRS federal tax penalty, and therefore we could keep all of the proceeds from interest that we may earn above and beyond our agreed upon interest rate. And then a month later, we passed a resolution to sell the bonds. There was another member from Baird there at that time, and they explained that the market was looking favorable, and they were looking towards the end of that week to potentially sell those bonds. And the market news that came from the feds was favorable, the market reaction was favorable, and so Baird goes in communication with our district office, with our superintendent, with our board president, and the bonds were sold on Thursday. And it's initial sale, and then it will become actually final on July 24th. And they were sold at a cumulative interest rate of 4.403%. So that's the first batch sale at $15 million.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda items. I do want to point out that 7B, the 202425 WIAA contracts, will be pulled from consent and added into action items 10. It will be under 10D. So 10D will be 202425 WIAA contracts. With that, Mrs. Steele, I want to run down.
Motion to approve the Richland Center High School participating in the short-term exchange program with Nuestra Señora de las Nieves High School in Argentina through Nissel Open Door in January and February 2025. Motion to approve the policy 5851, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays to allow the baseball team to travel during spring break to have the opportunity to play early season games. Motion to approve the revised payment from June 10th board meeting to the amount of $2,680 to Dr. Dale Sennett and 900 to Kay Taylor for the accompanying of our choirs and solo ensemble events during the 202324 school year. Motion to accept the recommendation from Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee to approve the revisions to the 2425 employee handbook as presented, effective July 1, 2024. Motion to approve the fine arts and hornet powerlifting as probationary clothes beginning in the 2425 school year. Motion to accept the Richland Online Contract, effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2026, as presented. Motion to approve the scope of engagement with Johnson and Locke to conduct a district annual audit. And motion to approve the budget revisions for the 2324 fiscal year as presented in accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin Statute 65.905A. This shall require a two-thirds majority vote. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion, then, to approve the consent agenda items? Motion to be by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 I'll make the motion, then. We approve the modified agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 All right, on to information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
So you can see on the top table there, we've got a handful of openings here, a few that the board will be acting on later tonight, night custodians, support staff, special education aid positions, as well as a handful of teaching positions. We continue to go through this process, and as positions open up or resignations are accepted, we'll get new jobs posted. But that's what we have open as of right now, and we're plowing along through that. And then the bottom three tables, there's a lot of information the board has already seen, but making it available to the public in terms of certified admin exempt, non-exempt staff and transfers, those kinds of things on the left, as well as support staff and co-curricular on the right. Any questions from the board, anything regarding transfers and vacancies and appointments? Thank you.
The fourth quarter disciplinary report.
Okay, so at the end of each quarter, the board knows that they see a discipline report. I should point out, at the end of quarter three, it was asked by at least one board member to also get an idea of the number of occurrences compared to the number of actual unique students, because one student can have multiple occurrences. That table is embedded into the memo there. You can see the number of occurrences at each grade, as well as the number of unique students that make up those disciplines. If you're looking for more information on that, I certainly can try to gather that for you as we get into a new year. And then you'll see the traditional offenses charts, as well as some attachments, where you've got some individual charts below. Just some things that I saw. 2324 continues to run a little higher than previous years. That's shown in the green bar graph compared to the blue and orange, although it is similar to our third quarter that we had. And then looking at the individual discipline charts, again, I'm kind of looking for, and everybody can interpret this their own way, but what I'm looking for is I'm looking for either a group of lines in 2324 that are significantly higher or lower than the other years, or if the blue line, fourth quarter, is, you know, not following trends, anomalies there. And so here's a couple of things that I saw throughout those graphs. For our attendance intruency, fourth quarter was our lowest of the year, and actually lower than any quarter that we had in the 2223 school year as well. So we certainly improved in our attendance intruency this last quarter. Possessions and use of drugs, we did not have any offenses in the fourth quarter in our district for possessing and/or using drugs. However, our possession and/or use of tobacco was the highest of any quarter that we had this year, although somewhat consistent with last year's data. And then probably the biggest thing that I continue to see, and that I continue to read about at a state and national level, is verbal confrontations and defiance of authority. Both of these things are on the rise over the last three years, and while fourth quarter is traditionally the worst, certainly our overall numbers continue to trend up, and it's something that we're trying to continue to address and find ways to address that. And then I guess lastly, you'll see push-strike staff. You will see that that blue line for fourth quarter is the highest that it's been in recent times. I should point out, though, there were 58 offenses. Forty-seven of those were from our kindergarten class and really just a handful of students. Not to minimize the offense, but I don't want you to think that we've got 58, you know, students running around pushing or striking our staff. So those total offenses were by 10 unique individuals. Our building admin, our president here tonight, if the board has any specific questions for them, or if they have any questions for me on a general level.
This is one question I have. It's for all three buildings. The trend from Q4, what types of programs can be implemented and brought in for the beginning of the first quarter, starting in the next school year? Because obviously, kids are going to be moving up, so we're going to be switching buildings. What kind of communication, what kind of programs are going to be in place to help combat the various issues that we're having?
I'll just talk about, one of the things that Mr. Board mentioned was this last school year, I think, for some elevated numbers for our use of tobacco and nicotine. We're trialing some different vape detectors in some bathrooms, so I think that's an increase there. But starting next school year, the hope is to have both intermediate school and the high school fully outfitted for every bathroom for those, and then to advertise that as a deterrent of bringing the nicotine and tobacco into the building. So I think that's one big thing that I'm excited about. I think it will help keep that out of the building. Other districts have seen a decrease in those offenses.
Thank you.
You mentioned, you know, what for students transitioning to new buildings. I know that the sixth grade teachers, especially the special education teachers, have been up here before the end of the school year to talk with some of our teachers here about the upcoming students and the needs they may have. So just making sure that we're all aware of them now, you know, before school starts, or just getting to know them the first day and trying to fix it. So do more of that conversation in the most buildings better earlier.
I'd say at the intermediate, it'll be a lot of just going back to those basics. So, you know, we start the year, you know, really heavy of these expectations, and so kids are aware of them, but revisiting them often. And I think that's usually where we start to see that uptick in fourth quarter, is kids know what they're still pushing the boundaries. So just trying to do better and be more diligent in how we're making sure our message is getting across and revisiting those expectations again.
We'll continue to do the hornet wake, which we've done, and that kind of starts their foundation for moving forward, the expectations in various school settings. I think having our, like Mrs. Perkins mentioned, having the guidance and the spec, or she mentioned spec ed, but also having our guidance teams communicate more so to make sure we're having wraparound services for students that might need different supports, that might not be special education. Our guidance program in elementary does already use Second Step, and we'll continue moving with that, elevate and increase our small group to help make sure that the students are feeling secure and feeling confident with their connections. And if they don't have them, helping to establish those while they're young, and teaching them how, what does that look like? How do you make friends? What should a friend be? A lot of those very basics that many of us, when we were younger, we would just go to the park and play, or we'd have friends over and we'd hang out before we were through. There were six of us playing together, or you were playing with your siblings. Children don't play like they used to. I know that sounds kind of goofy, but it's true. They engage digitally, but they're not learning on other boundaries, how to respect someone when they're in their space or they're in their bubble, you know, how to listen to someone, even how to be empowered by using your own words, to say stop, I don't like that, instead of just letting it go, and now they're uncomfortable. But a lot of those really basic foundational skills of socializing, we need to teach them. And I think encouraging parents and trying to get more ways for parents to understand how to navigate these things with their child, not just having them here at school, will help us. So elevate that parent involvement and continue a lot of the pieces we are doing. As Mr. Board said, you know, when you look at these numbers, it doesn't, by no means is this a huge number of students that are having some of these struggles, but there are students that are struggling, and we need to support them, and there's many ways that we do that.
Thank you.
If I may agree with Mrs. Hardy, one of the charts that you gave us here was verbal confrontation, and it may have arisen from this kind of idea. Is this happening in the classroom and the hallways? You know, is there any particular place that these things are taking place that would be unusual or different from what it's been?
Building admin would be best suited to answer that question. Have you noticed any difference in the verbal confrontation, their defiance of authority, in the location where it's happening, or is it pretty typical?
I don't know if there's been a change. I think it's the same. Classrooms, a lot of the times, it's when a student is asked to do maybe something that they're not super excited about, I think. A lot of times, a pushback occurs, but I don't know if there's been a significant change, at least I haven't seen any, in when and where they have occurred.
You know, when you get these statistics, is that coming from classroom conflicts, or is this maybe in the office, and, you know?
Yeah, it's a great question. It could be anywhere, anywhere around campus or off campus, if it's part of the school day in some way.
I was wondering if there was any indication as to where this rise was initiated?
Yeah, I think that there is a rise, but it could be anywhere. So when we put an offense in a Skyward, what you're not seeing here is where each offense has taken place, but there's an option for us as administration to go in and click exactly where the offense occurred. So we can see that as an administration level. It's not indicated on the chart.
If that's possible, to maybe indicate where these things are at, it might be a specific area, you know, these things are taking place that maybe need to be addressed. You know, the increase in this, I understand, and what Amy was saying before is definitely a part of this. The kids don't communicate with each other like we did in our youth. I mean, the kids got together, and you suffer your own disputes, but too often, when they're sitting in front of a machine, they don't know how to interact with one another. And so I was wondering, you know, classroom, in the hallway, in the bathrooms, outside. You know, if we knew, had a better handle as to where these things were going, that would give us the opportunity to correct the problem. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What kind of offenses fall under code of conduct? Everything else is pretty self-explanatory, but I was kind of curious what would fall under that.
It's kind of like the catch-all for things that aren't specific in there. So in Skyward, a lot of these are very specific, right, when you look through it? But that's kind of just the catch-all inappropriate behavior that occurs in school.
When you filter these options, do you have, as Mr. Van Landy was saying, where is the option for when available? So, for example, would you notice in any of the buildings, after lunch tends to be the most significant time of these occurrences? Just kind of thinking outside of the box, because maybe that can be attacked in a different way if we...
I wouldn't say like the meat spot, but we often know like 7, 8, 3, 8, lunch recess, we should be around, because that's when they can put football or, you know, be in close proximity to each other. You know, we definitely know the times in our buildings when things are more active, whether it's transitioning, like I mentioned, the recess. So we learn from that, and we can put the times, we can pick the places, but we just kind of try to make sure staff are out in the hallway. We've talked about that a lot this year during transition times, because there's so many kids passing in the hall.
If I may follow up on Neil's comment, is this school-wide, or is this high school, or middle school, or primary school? I mean, does this come from all areas?
This data is district-wide. We pull it K4 through 12. We certainly have the ability to break it down as minute as we need to, and we do that at the building levels to some degree, but to be able for the board and public to digest what they're seeing.
Exactly. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? All right, on to 9C, the Dane County New Teacher Program Overview.
So at the last board meeting, the board had approved the participating in the consortium with some schools around the Madison area. with some schools around the Madison area for the new teacher project, and kind of not using CISA III, which we traditionally used. And the board had asked for some additional information from Dr. Johnson, and kind of what are some of the benefits, or what are we getting for this, albeit relatively small, but still an increase in cost? What are we getting that she likes better than the old version? So I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson, and just kind of give an overview of why you chose this particular tool.
Sure. Well, first, I wanted to apologize for not including all the information for the last meeting. I felt that I kind of left you hanging, and so I appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain a little bit more about this. When we brought this to you on April 8th, it was to kind of tell you about what the teacher leader group from the high school was wanting. They were wanting some coaching training, and it was from this consortium, the Dane County New Teacher Project. This group, it's actually a national group called New Teacher Project, it just happens to be housed in Dane County. It's a federal program that has really well-supported information and trainers, and are very well-trained. And so that group of, of people, our teacher leaders here at the high school, had actually done a lot of research trying to figure out where they wanted their training to come from, and this is where they wanted it from. So after I looked at it, when they wrote it to me, I was like, huh, there's a lot of things here. And if you notice, there's 88 hours' worth of training included with what, what their first page of that calendar that I shared with you. If we went to everything, if just one person went to everything, it could be 88 hours' worth. Now, likely you won't make it to everything, but we're going to try to really go, go to quite a bit of those things. And we have a thing that we have to follow here called PI 34. It's a requirement for licensure in the state of Wisconsin that requires us to provide a mentorship program for our new teachers. So every new teacher that's hired here has to be provided a mentorship program. We haven't used CISA for that in the past, we have just had it internally. It was created before I was here, and it just kind of ran. And I wasn't really privy until last year exactly to what was happening with that programming. And so I met with the coordinators of that and decided that I kind of wanted to dissect it a little bit, and realized I wanted to beef it up, because we're finding that our new teachers a lot of times aren't formally trained as educators, so we need to make this program a little stronger. And when I saw what the new teacher project had to offer, I thought, hmm, let's try this for a year, and try to use what they have at a national level and bring it to what our mentorship program can be. And so that's essentially why I decided to go this route, and if all goes well, it's all going to be funded by the peer mentorship grant. If not, it would come out of my budget. However, it would, it would be well worth it, because the resources that we're going to get, even just for this first year, are going to help us rebuild our mentorship program so that we can really get it strong for our new teachers. Does that answer everything? I kind of just said a whole bunch of things. I did put in there, I had four points as to what it would give us, and I think I touched on all of that. Are there any other questions that are outstanding about this?
You mentioned, if only one person went, you would get 88 hours' worth of content. Would there be instances where four or five, like your whole mentor group could attend at the same time?
Yes. And actually, we already had an instance of that three weeks ago, where Heather Lott, the leader of the New Teacher Project, came here and met with our, our teacher leaders from the high school, and worked out a plan for what their program was going to look like for this next school year. And then she met later with our mentor coordinators, that were named for our in-district mentorship. That's what gets kind of confusing. There's kind of two different kinds of mentorship happening. We have the high school curriculum teacher leader mentorship group, and then we have our district mentorship for new employees, for new teachers. So those, both of those are being served by this.
Is this geared more toward helping train the mentors?
Yes.
Be more effective versus having information for those new teachers?
Right. It, it's going to be for both, honestly. There's going to, we're going to have our mentors and mentees attend some of these trainings together. They're virtual, some of them are, and so from 4:30 to 6:00 PM once a month, and so the mentor and mentee will be attending those meetings, as well as meeting outside of that time. But the, the New Teacher Project will then be able to support some of the content that they're receiving for new teachers. The mentorship training will be a really, an interesting process for me to go through too, because I've never been officially trained as a mentor. And so I do will then get to be trained through this process.
Thank you. Do the mentors go into the classroom with the new staff and work with them in the classroom, or is it just outside of class period, where they communicate?
The district mentorship program for the new teachers of the district, it is, it can be both, depending on what the new teacher needs. They kind of set that up between the two of them. It's a pair of people, and they work closely together all year. So however that needs to work. In the, in the high school programming, they do, they actually have, if you remember, some time set aside in their schedule to be able to go in and support their, their content group. So like, if I'm the math coach, then I would go in and observe and support those teachers that way. And they do, they offer a lot of, there's mentorship training, there's coaching training, there's administrators who would mentorship training, there's a lot of different trainings that you'll see on that, that schedule that's listed there. And when I read all those, I just thought, oh goodness, something is going to be there for all of us. It's not, I love CISA III, they've offered a lot of good things over the last few years, they're really upping their game, but they don't, their, their enrichment for mentorship isn't this deep. It, it's pretty straightforward. You have new teachers? We'll train them, three hours today, and then three hours next week, and then it's usually over. I mean, flippant, it's not, I'm sure they put in a ton of time in there, very knowledgeable people, but this is all year long. It's regular training monthly, that they will keep revisiting with their mentor and mentee. That's what I like about it.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, time to action items. Ten, a new policy, 8121 personal background checks, second reading.
Okay, so at the last board meeting, you saw the first reading of 8121 personal background checks for contracted services. We had a opportunity earlier on tonight's agenda for the public to weigh in on this policy. This is a new policy recommended by Neola. According to our policy, new policies do have to have two readings, that's why it's here tonight for a second reading. So I would ask the board, one, do you have any questions on it? And then, two, have some discussion and consideration of final vote to take effect on July 1st. Actually, this one would be effective immediately, which is almost July 1st, but not 1st. So, do you have any questions on the policy regarding personal background checks for contracted services? Essentially, this is saying that if we're going to hire a contractor, they've got to let us know if they have employees that will be interacting with children that may have violated certain criteria, or if we're hiring a company and they're subcontracting, that they would make sure that those employees also let us know about those issues that may come up. Yes, sir?
I think that this is a good policy, but I'd like to know, what does Neola stand for?
Neola is a company that the district hired initially to do a policy audit, and then we use them as our policy writing service. Legally vetted, and they work with, I think it's up to about 80% of the school districts in Wisconsin now, to help make sure that they are in compliance with policies and stay up to date with the law. And so often, things will come about legally, or school districts have been burned by a specific issue, and so they will recommend to all of their clients, here is the policy that we have legally vetted, and we are, you know, recommending that your board consider adopting it.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Board? I'll make a motion then to approve policy 8121, personal background checks recommended by Neola as presented, effective immediately. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion. Mr. Van Lande?
Aye.
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 New policy 5505, academic honesty, second review.
Okay, similarly, this was brought to the board at the last meeting, and similarly, we had a dedicated time earlier in tonight's agenda for the public to weigh in on it. Neola had realized that they did not really have a policy regarding academic honesty. Most school districts, ourselves included, included academic honesty, what you couldn't and couldn't do, either in the classroom setting or in student handbooks, which is kind of an extension of policy. But districts were asking for something a little bit more, had some more teeth in it, and make a policy itself with the, you know, with the ability of AI and plagiarism and those kinds of tools to have something in place. So this is the policy that Neola has also recommended. It's also been vetted through our committees at the local level. So I would ask the same thing, one, are there any questions? And then, two, feel free to have some discussion, and then finally consider, you know, possible vote on implementing this policy. Any questions?
All right. Is there a motion then to approve policy 5505, academic honesty, recommended by Neola as presented, effective immediately? So who? Motion made by Mr. Van Lande. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Discussion.
Aye.
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 Great. Revision to policy 3426, early retirement teachers.
Okay, so over the last couple of, several years, I should say, it's been brought to the board or at committee level to take a look at the teacher early retirement benefit. Our current early teacher retirement benefit states that if a person is at least 55 years old, and they have been employed as a teacher for the district for at least 15 years or more, then they are entitled to a benefit, at the board's granting, that essentially gives them additional $7,000 a year for five years, or a $35,000 benefit. And many, many years ago, this was a very good benefit, and one that attracted people and retained people. But we, what we have seen locally over the past 10 years or so, is that oftentimes this policy is working against us. We end up having teachers that meet the eligibility, they are 55 years old, they've got at least 15 years in our system, or in our district, they put in for early retirement, we grant them the early retirement, we pay them the $7,000 a year for five years, but the individual oftentimes is not necessarily ready to truly retire, and they end up going and work for a neighboring school district for, you know, additional salary. And so we oftentimes end up paying them to leave. And so this is, again, something that has been discussed numerous times over the last few years. Last spring, excuse me, fall, our policy and personnel committee, mostly the personnel committee, really examined this policy in depth, and they kind of examined six different options, from, you know, just getting rid of it completely, to dumping money into salary, to paying teachers some additional money if they, once they reach retirement, if they continue to stay. And I think I speak for the committee when I say that, I think unanimously, or at least it was highly recommended, that, well, if we can get teachers more salary, that will allow them to capitalize on their Wisconsin retirement system, which is calculated off the top three years earning, that would be best, okay? But in order for that to happen, in order for us to make that much advancement in our salary schedule, we were in need of having a referendum that we'd need to pass. And so the committee put that on hold until they saw the results of the April referendum, specifically question one, which was adding money to our operating revenue, which a good chunk of that was being placed towards teacher salaries. In the meantime, however, we didn't want our teachers who would be coming eligible, or who were thinking about retiring, we didn't want them to panic and say, well, I better take this benefit now for fear that it might not be there. And so the board last fall made a good faith effort to keep this policy intact through the 24, 25 school year, and that we would have a new plan in place by the end of this, of the school year. And that, I would still recommend keeping that good faith policy in place. And the reason it has to be a good faith is because this board can't lock future boards, even if it's the same people, into those decisions. They always have a right to waive policy, alter policy, revise policy. And so that's why it has to be a good faith effort. Fast forward, referendum passed, and so the personnel committee started reexamining this policy. How can we really make this work for us and for our teachers? And then how do we get there? So, I'm going to walk you through in blue on the memo what the proposal is, and this has been through the policy committee and the personnel committee, and is unanimously recommended by both of those committees. So again, teacher would have to be 55 years of age, and they would have to work for the district for at least 15 years. And then that first section of the blue in bold says retirement immediately following the 24, 25 school year. And this would be for any teacher who has met that eligibility for retirement as of June 30th next year. So either those who have been eligible but continue to work, or those that will be coming eligible in the 24, 25 school year. And we have 11 of those folks. We would give them two options to choose from, and they would have to choose one of these two options. Option one, listed there, would be essentially the exact same benefit they're used to, a sum of $7,000 a year for five years, paid out over 24 installments, okay? Nearly identical, if not identical, to what they currently have. The second option down below is to pay them an additional stipend to continue to work for the Richland School District. So if they work for the Richland School District in a full-time certified staff member capacity teacher, then we would give them an additional stipend on top of their teacher contract of $10,000 for the 25, 26 school year, if they continue to be employed, an additional $10,000 on top of whatever their 26, 27 teacher contract is, another $10,000 on top of their 27, 28 teacher contract. That was the original plan, okay? Give them, by working for us, instead of $35,000 for leaving us, give them $30,000 on the front end to continue to work for us. However, we didn't want a mass exodus of teachers in three years. And so the second part is meant to soften the blow a little bit. And so that $10,000 stipend would then phase out over the next three years. It would drop to a 7,500 additional under their teacher contract in 28, 29, $5,000 the next year, 2,500 the next year, and then they would just be at a point where their teacher contract would be in effect. And that's how the people who are eligible now and will become eligible next year would work. They would have the ability to take the money and continue to work, or take the benefit. The rest of it's similar, but I want to pause for just a second, and I promise I'll give you some examples to see how does this truly affect teachers a little bit. But do you have any questions on what, what the ask is from the board?
I don't have a question, however, I do have a comment. In 1999, I was 55, and I retired under a program very similar to this, offered by Resign Unified Schools. And I had a salary, plus they gave me a stipend to carry me over until 62, when that fell away, and then I went on social security. So I, I think this is an excellent program. It worked well for me, and I think it would work well for those that are considering retiring, and I think we've given them options that would be of benefit to them, and also to us, the school board, so I think it's a good, good program.
Okay, let me just, thank you for that. Continue here, 25, 26. So we have two additional teachers who would join or would be eligible for retirement after the 25, 26 school year. They would have a very similar, they would choose from one of two options, slightly pared down though. Option one, they would get a sum not to exceed 7,000, but they would only get that for four years. would only get that for four years, or a $28,000 benefit. Option two would be they would get that additional $10,000 stipend, but that would only happen for two years. And then it would start to phase out, just like the previous one, 75-5-25. And then finally, we have one additional member who would be eligible in the 26 after the 26-27 school year. And for that, again, we would pare that down. They would get $7,000 for three years, or a $21,000 benefit if they retired. And if they continued to work, they would get the $10,000 additional stipend, and then it would phase out from there. And so that's what it would look like from a from a phasing out standpoint. Now, why did we go three years out? Well, anybody who is eligible for retirement after that, they will have lived three years in our drastically improved new salary schedule. And so their WRS earnings and their top three years earnings will already have reaped the benefits of of having that additional money. I'll have you scroll down if you've got your tablets, or flip to the chart if you've got a printed copy. And I'm 100% sure we'll all print it off, but I'll walk you through it. On the left, I've just got general IDs there in red. These are the 11 employees that we currently have in our district that would be eligible for retirement at the end of this next school year. Ages, names, everything like that has been omitted, but it is actual data. I'll just walk you across line one. So this teacher, if they worked through the 24-25 school year and then decided to retire, I'm looking under the blue, their top three years would be just over $66,000. And I'm and we're making the assumption for all of these across the board that their last three years are their highest three years of earning. Might not always be the case. We're also making the assumption that when we're calculating WRS for them, we don't know their exact financial situation or how they have their WRS structured. So for all of these across the board, it is the default settings for WRS, okay? So when you're comparing them, you are comparing apples to apples, although the numbers for any individual may look different in actuality based on the options that they chose. So with that, a person who has been in the district for as long as number one has and is the age that number one is, based on that three-year average, they would be taking home an estimated Wisconsin retirement benefit of $3880 each month. If they retired and chose option one, they would also get an additional annual retirement benefit by the district of $7,000. Multiply the $3880 times 12, add the $7,000 on top of it, their annual revenue for the first five years of retirement would be right around $53,500, okay? If you then look at, well, what does that look like after years five, when the local retirement benefit falls off? Now it's just the $3880 times 12. So in years six through 25, those next 20 years of their life, their annual revenue would be 46.5. And then in the blue and in the green there on the far right, so if you look at what is the total amount of income that they get through the first five years of retirement, that person's getting $267,819. And then if you look at what do they get over the next 20 years, it's $931,274. That's five years of a local retirement benefit coupled by the WRS retirement benefit. Scrolling down then to the second chart, the IDs match up. So employee number one on the bottom chart is exactly the same as employee number one on this chart chart all the way down through. If they were to continue to work for the district, and they would take an additional salary increase in lieu of the retirement package. Now their three-year average, of course, we're assuming that they'll stay for three years, now their three-year average is 85.1. This is with a new salary schedule that's in place, plus the additional $10,000 a year. That bumps their Wisconsin retirement monthly revenue up to 49.67, and that's a benefit for life under most people's situation. That's a $13,000 retirement benefit increase. They would not get the annual local retirement, that's why that column's blank. And so their annual benefit would be the 49.67 times 12, or just under $60,000. Plus, they would have gotten an additional $30,000 in extra salary. So when you add that on, those first five years of retirement, that person that was going set to receive $267,819 now would be set to receive $327,990, or a $60,171 difference. And if you look all the way down in blue, at the very bottom, you'll see the average, the average difference for the teacher continuing to work, taking that additional money, is 56.5 for the 11 employees. They would all every one of them would benefit by an average of that amount. And then when you look at the far green, what happens years six through 25, those next 20 years? Well, again, now your Wisconsin retirement benefit is that much higher. That person who was set to make $931,000 over the course of those 20 years would now make just shy of 1.2 million, or a quarter of a million dollar increase. And again, if you look down at the average, it's just shy of a quarter million, an average of $245,000 or $246,000. So what does it cost the district? Well, essentially, it's going to cost the district, these people who are set to retire and want to take advantage of the retirement benefit, we're going to pay them $7,000. That's out there, that's in policy. We are set to pay 11 people that amount of money. There are some things the board could do to say, we're only going to do that to five, but that would really be a PR nightmare, I believe, okay? For an additional $3,000, $10,000, we're keeping those teachers working for us. So do we pay them $7,000 a year to leave and potentially work for another school district, or do we pay them $10,000 a year and keep them? And for me, paying additional $3,000 difference to have a veteran teacher that's familiar with our school system, they would have been here for at least 15 years, they're a veteran, they understand what goes on in schools, classroom management, all of those things that we want to consider, to me, that's a no-brainer for that additional money. And it benefits them financially, first of all, if they continue same, and then in the Wisconsin retirement system for the rest of their life. So that's a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions. And many of you are on either personnel or policy and heard this, but again, happy to answer any questions that we might have. The hope would be that we could pass this tonight so that our folks who are thinking about retirement and are eligible on July 1 to submit those retirements, that they would know exactly what their options are. I will add, while Mr. String has given us the full endorsement that everything is sound that we're trying to do, he may have some minor legal tweaks to it, it will change the integrity of the policy, it would just be some wording. That would come back to the board for revisions, but at least our teachers would know this is what we're going to live in. These are the two options that we would have if approved. What questions do you have for me, if any?
I'm a living example of this program working, and I would highly recommend if we do accept that. The Wisconsin retirement system is one of the best in the nation, the best funded, the best monitored, the best, you know, it's got the most integrity, and we've managed to keep governments out of the fund over a 15, if not 20 years at this point. So it's a safe bet, things are good, and I would move that we accept this.
Any other questions from board members?
I think that's kind of the motion.
So Mr. Van Landay made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Van Landay?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. The modified agenda, WW10D, the 2024-25 WIAA contracts.
Okay, so each year, we do have to sign a contract essentially saying that we're going to become a member of the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, the WIA. We've always been a member of that. Richland Center High School is the main school, and then the two charter schools, the Online Academy and Partner School are considered, what's the word, Ms. Sowdy?
Charter. Charter.
Charter, okay. Auxiliary type services. So Ms. Sowdy's here to answer any specific questions, but I think it's fairly self-explanatory.
Do students that attend one of those other, the Online Academy or the Partner, are they eligible for sports? What does being a member to the WIAA get bring to the local school?
You must be a member of the WIAA to participate in interscholastic athletics in the state of Wisconsin.
So we don't have a choice?
If you wish to participate with 99% of other high schools in the state.
You can run independently, correct me if I'm wrong, but you cannot play another WIA team. So correct if you're not, and you can't participate in the WIA tournament.
Correct.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion then to approve the application for the WIAA for the 2024-25 school year for Richland Center High School, Richland Online Academy, and Partner School as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Ms. Troxell. Discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
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 Make a motion, we move into closed session pursuant under statutes 19.851(c) and/or (f) as appropriate to consider employment promotion and compensation of employees. As we're discussing individual employee hiring and compensation. In Wisconsin statutes 19.851(f), the board the board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, we're liable to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Van Landay. Discussion? Mr. Doudna?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.